Zoom. Against March 12th. Federal bar suspending certain provisions of the open legal law. Just the section 13 lines when the final box will be conducted. No participation in attendance. And we were still, we did while we were participating in Zoom. I'm Richard Espers.
Jeff.
Jeff Saffron.
Christine Bird.
Homebird.
Roger McCarthy.
And I.
It's just during my Zoom portion of the meeting. Okay, 7 o'clock, points now recording subdivision approval of one. So May 24th, 2021.
I'll make that a motion.
Seconded by Roger. Further discussion, any issues? Could be none, none? I vote yes. Jeff?
I vote yes.
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 I don't know if I was there, so I will.
Yes.
Okay, Carrie.
Yes.
There you go. Hi Dale.
Hi Dale.
Hi, thank you.
All right. Time being.
I couldn't be there, but I'm here.
Yep, good for you. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, time being 7:05, we have a continued public hearing, seven founders court, application for stormwater management and land disturbance permits. Applicant owner Ronald Caldwell Jr. leveling out the back gag, creating usable. Yeah, it's space installation of a controlled smulp in Greenbelt and reinforced turf. Uh, action date of June 30th, 2021 and how, Tony, can you expound upon the fact you heard from the applicant?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. We did receive an email this morning from the applicant requesting an extension for the hearing to, extension to Monday, August 9th. Um, that is for that, that meeting with an action day set for Thursday, August 12th. The latest update, though, the applicant will have a land surveyor at the property either this week or later next week. And he's working as an engineering firm or an engineer to prepare the stormwater information that is required.
Okay, bye.
The applicant hopes to have the information ready for the meeting, for the August meeting, and the Director of Public Works has been informed, uh, has been informed on this update.
Okay, but he isn't avail, wasn't available to submit a form at, as of this point.
That is correct, but I did receive that, um, a written request, if you will, via email.
Okay.
Um, the.
Well, we have another meeting, we can, if he, if he would kindly just submit one and then at our next meeting, we'll, uh, again, we'll vote on his extension request.
Absolutely.
We acknowledge the extension request, I, I thought last time they were tying it too tight trying to get an engineering work like that done, so. Uh, well, let's make a, I want to take a motion that is, so long as the applicant submits a, uh, a extension of action for our next meeting.
Okay.
That they, uh, that we approved his request for an extension for a, a meeting, a first meeting in August, August 9th, 2021. And, uh, so have him put, uh, August 30th, 31st or something for time of action extension.
Certainly, certainly, and if I may, to, in speaking with him today, it was simply, um, as I understand, he, he is out of town, if you will, so did not have the ability to, to send in writing, but certainly he will.
Okay.
I'm sure he will.
I'll make that a motion, but I would also just say that maybe you should go into September, just, yeah, I mean, that only gives them one meeting, right? We do it August 9th, end of August. Go to the first meeting, just give him an extra week or whatever, two weeks.
All right, haven't put, haven't put any date in September, he wants, you know, the 15th or the 30th, but it doesn't matter, you know, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll take action when he supplies all the information we need. I'll second the motion. Okay, further discussion? Be known, I vote yes.
I vote yes.
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 Dale? Yes, okay. Carrie Dunanis. All right, Tony, we're down to your portion of the meeting. Director report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman members, so a few updates I'd like to share with you at the end. Dale had to, with respect to our LRRP planning grant, which we do have a, a quick part as well, but I'd like to share. Later this summer, we have heard, or if you watched a Board of Selectments meeting, the Mexican restaurant will be located at Oxford Crossing at the former Oxbarr Grill. El Patron has, I believe this will be their third establishment in, um, in the region, and so very excited to, um, to have them come to, come to town. The next update, Zane Place, Zane Place is 580 Main Street. The applicant is Insari Builders. Um, the applicant will be making a presentation, the project itself is for 42 units of apartments, a new building on Main Street, you may recall, Insari Builders, um, they, as I understand, were the, um, owners developer of the condo complex behind the 580 Main Street. And this applicant is proposing to, um, to build a 40B project, so 42 units of apartments with, of that approximately 10 units will be deemed affordable through the 40B program. The applicant will be going before the Board of Selectment tomorrow to present their project publicly for the first time. Have met prior through technical review early, early on, but would anticipate additional reviews. Once the applicant, um, or as the applicant comes before the Board of Selectment by process, and folks may recall from the, the 40B workshop, the applicant is seeking a, a lip application, which through the state, um, local, um, a, a local petition where they will be seeking for a project eligibility letter from, uh, DHCD, and that project eligibility letter is sort of that, that ticket that allows the applicant to, under the 40B rules and regulations, come before the zoning board of appeals for a comprehensive permit. Um, whereas they, they are applying again as a, um, as a 40B project. The PEL, that project eligibility letter, what that really again does is not only gives them the ticket, if you will, um, to submit to the local zoning board of appeals, but also assists with them securing the necessary funding that state has available for those types of projects. So just wanted to share that with the board, but also, um, I will also be, we'll also be forwarding to you, um, some of the, the plans that they will be presenting tomorrow as well for, um, for the board.
So how much involvement does the planning board have over this?
Sure, and, um, and actually, I was going to mention that during the review process, the approving authority locally is the ZBA. However, during the review process, the, um, ZBA will be required to solicit comments from all the various boards and staff. So there will be a point in time where, and perhaps, um, it would, perhaps through an item agenda, um, be seeking some guidance from, from the board. But at the end of the day, um, it is, um, falls under, the comprehensive permit falls under the ZBA. And certainly, you know, our, from our side, Mary and I will be, of course, working closely with ZBA and looking at too, as we review plans, very similar in the mechanics, if you will, um, as we do site plan review. But should the board wish to, to approve the project, it'd be a series of perhaps conditions, um, whether it be from fire, police, from this board, conservation commission, and so on.
I mean, things like a sep, two entrances, or, you know, second egress, or, I know stormwater management would cover under that, but I would think how they're gonna make, how they're gonna access it proper route 12 and.
I think there's still some stormwater management involved in it.
Yeah. I'm more like, so you got 42, you know, I don't know how big these units are or anything like that, but you have basically 42 people, that's 84 cars, say, if two cars per unit, that's a lot of cars exiting onto Route 12 any time.
Just.
And soon be happy to, um, to, to share the, um, um, when they have finalized their, their concept plan, as they present tomorrow, I would definitely share with, with this board as well.
They have submitted a, I was on tech review, a, a plan. And Rich and I were at the meeting with town council and what, what we can do as a town. There's also, in anything, any appeals or anything, the town has to go through land court. If there's any other issues, I mean, if the abonors take them and challenge it, they go to regular superior court, so it's a whole different set of conditions. But, but the plan they had, I think it was 84 parking spaces, one reason they're going before the ZBA is they are looking for certain
Yeah.
relief type things, and, um, I, I thought, I don't know about you, Rich, I thought that was pretty interesting, as far as what we can do, what we can't do as a board. The only thing I saw, the building they put up, they showed, I hope that's not the building they're gonna use. It looked like a four-story factory. And, uh, that, and then we had another company come before us for what, 200 units? And you look at what they presented, was really, really nice, was really nice.
I guess that's the thing with.
But we will have input as far as the things that you've talked about and stuff, and it goes before the ZBA, so we haven't had one of these projects, I don't think, in a long time.
The rule in 40B is 25% affordable?
That's, um, as I understand, yes, and, and certainly depending on the program too, depending.
How many 40Bs is it gonna take to get us up to 10%?
200 more after this.
That's why, because 42 is a kind of a weird number for rental units, you know, why not do 50?
Because he only has enough space to do 40. When he first came to us, it was, what was it, like 28, he was gonna do 28 units, and then they started working on things, but that, the, they're also dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers, because it's in a floodplain area. They gotta go through that process, and I, I, he came before the, before the tech review, like, a year and a half, two years ago.
Yeah.
And that, and you go working on with floodplain and all this other.
I just think there's gonna be something better than 40B to, to entice low-income development, like, you know.
Proposing its own access, like.
Oh, yeah.
Right behind the old Big Eyes, right, whatever it's called.
The access road is gonna be a little further north than the Big Eye.
But.
Between Oxbarr and the Big Eye.
I mean, that, that, I grew up in that neighborhood, I mean, I, I grew up in that neighborhood.
So between Sad's Lot and Big Eye?
Yeah.
That's not, that, that, I'm telling you, that's a pond.
I thought that was floodplain over there.
They've already gone through with the flood, so they've got a plan and they're dealing with all, but that's all gonna be part of the thing.
And, and again, there will be a series of approvals, including the Army Corps, because there's, there's a, um, a flow achievement there, come, you know, I've, I've come to learn.
I didn't think you could build in a floodplain if it's flood, I didn't think, you know.
Well, they're, they're not in the floodplain.
No, it's, it's just outside of it.
And your question, Rich, I think there's like another 200 more we need to meet, uh, the quarter of 10%.
200, 200 affordable units.
Yeah.
And so at this rate, that's 2,000.
Well, I, yeah. If, if, if I may, just to, one of the ben, one of the important things to note here is, um, under the 40B, so although, and, uh, point taken, with respect to the 10 units or so that will be affordable, actually, in the eyes of the state, uh, the good news is that all 42 units would be considered as part of the inventory. So, um, so that in a way, um, could be.
Okay, that's a little bit, that's a little bit more.
I, I will share in the other project, although it's about 140 or so, um, come, both combined.
Right.
Closer to, to 200. That other, uh, project, um, although they, they, um, likewise, it's very, very early in concepts, but take that project or any other project, frankly, if they do 20% affordable, the state's gonna recognize the entire project um, as part of the, uh, SHI inventory. So where we are now, um, so we're at 7.3%, and we know it's a moving target, as we build more and more
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
units, but we'll, we will get there one way or another.
Have you heard anything about Orchard Hill?
I, I have not, no, not at this stage. But they're also on the inventory.
Yeah, I know, but they also wanna move, they wanna get out of there and come to Route 12. And I, I thought it was pretty high, I, action item for them at the time, last year, around this time, I think it was, it was.
Yeah, I mean, I will share, though, with respect to the SHI inventory, and I'm happy to provide it as well, um, that those units over at that site, um, are also on there. They are set to expire in two years, um, I believe it's 2024 or so, those will have to be renewed, um, and certainly whether it's there at site or elsewhere.
Well, they wanted to say, which was good news.
Certainly, and on the flip side, if they're not, again, that percentage just goes down significantly, will be down to about 3% or 4%.
But the other thing is, these new projects are gonna have to meet a lot of new building goals. Orchard Hill is just, it's not.
Without a doubt, they would have, they have their problems up there.
The other thing, not to, not to, to Tony's sound here, but he's working on something, I think, and I don't know if you've told us this or not, on a plan, a, a housing plan. And the way it's set up now, a, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, a developer can come in with a 40B project, and we have to work with that developer, no matter what his reputation is. He's working on a plan right now, a housing plan, and one, and correct me if I'm wrong, if, if we show, if we have a housing plan and we wanna increase our, uh, inventory by 5% a year, we get to pick the developer, am I correct?
So, so yes, um, and, and in that, in that way, if, if, if I may, um, the, the, the town has a lot more flexibility, um, because any project, you see, and, and part of that 40B process, if you're not at your 10%, at the end of the day, if you're not there, your 10%, then they could override local approvals. They still, by process, do need to go get their comprehensive permit, that term comprehensive, it's, it is, uh, in, in essence, that one, one authority, one permit, a significant amount of view and so on, but if there's any dispute there at the end, they can always go and petition, um, the state. And basically, the state would override, why? Because the town's not at 10%. If we have a housing production plan in place, which we applied for some grant funding for that, um, last week, right, through, through the other, through that pool of grants that we, we submit letters of support for. So as we're making, to your point, incremental progress, whether it be, and we set a percentage there, right? Traditionally, 1% or 2% a year, then the community may stop a project such as that from going forward. If the, again, if the town finds that the, um, the project doesn't meet its local goals, objectives, and the applicant has no ability to appeal, that's important, right? That's, that's what Attorney Witten was, uh, was, was sharing with us as well, um, at that, at that presentation, so.
Tony, we can't, I think, no, I'm sorry, but we can't refuse a specific developer, we can refuse specific developments, right?
A specific project. No, 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 but project, project specific.
But if we have a developer doing a project indirectly, we can, we can deal with that, right?
If the project doesn't meet the objectives, but.
Right, so in essence, we don't have to.
The developer would not be prohibited.
Right.
From doing another project or something, they, they could certainly come back to the table with revised plans and so on, based upon feedback and.
That's right.
And so on, so.
Tony, is this one building, is it one, one, one apartment building?
Yes, uh, one, one building.
And how many stories high is?
I believe it's four, but at this time, yeah.
He doesn't have the room spread out, so you know it's gonna be a big.
Four-story high building is pretty high.
Yeah.
Well, the other one is what, five, four-story buildings?
So I thought, no, I thought we had limits on the height.
Very, it's very conceptual now.
Didn't we have limits on, I mean, again, it wouldn't apply for 40B, I thought we had limits on how high a structure could be.
And, and, and here we are again, where it's, uh, you know, it's, it's a different process again, whereas we're not at that.
But again, you could see a 60, a 70-foot-high skyscape, what's that, it's gonna be, because they don't have the room, because they're gonna go up and up and up, and there's nothing you can do.
Well, that's why they're going before the ZBA, not us. Need relief.
So. Elevators required or something like that?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
But here's the thing, now, in this project for 40 units, there's gonna be 10 three-bedroom units, right? And 22 bedroom units, and then 10 one-bedroom units. So you, and the other one, uh, really is preliminary, is broken up the same way, they're not all gonna be three-bedroom units. Because people worry about the effect on the schools and stuff like that, and it's, you know.
That's big, though, like a three-bedroom, yeah, yeah, like three-bedroom units, usually they're just two, so, that's a big path.
It's all, it's all part of the, but some people say you're gonna get 43 bedroom units. It's, yeah, it's affordable housing. And just to let you know, Rich, you know this, that the developer comes in and wants a 40B project, and the town appeals it, and it goes to the housing court, the developer wins 98% of it.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not.
There aren't much to stand on, unless you can really document it. Yeah.
So, so that's, um, again, more, of course, more to come with, um, with, um, with that project and, and any other project as well. As we mentioned, um, there, there is, uh, another project that, um, it's a nine-acre parcel, the parcel adjacent to, to the Walmart, right? And, um, and there will be a time when they're at early concept stage, with their plans still seeking comments, um, we did have a technical review. I don't, I don't recall if there was one prior, um, my time, but, but, um, certainly, there's, there's many, as you, again, as you can imagine, basic comments early on um, with respect to everything, fire, septic, water capacity, and so on. And, um, prior to, to filing, it would, it's still gonna go through revisions, just part of the natural process, uh, I would anticipate that.
Quick question?
Yes.
You just mentioned a project that was submitted or brought per tech review
Mm-hmm.
on, next to Walmart. Is there a chance in the future when this, these plans that the town can maybe scan it and distribute it to the rest of the board, so?
Absolutely.
We can all take a peek, if we're not able to go to step review at 1 o'clock on a Wednesday, whatever it is.
Absolutely, a point really well taken, um, and I'm happy to share whatever I have to, um, with respect to that project and any other project moving forward, um, with the board too, happy to do that, so.
But just keep in mind, we get projects before tech review many times, and they don't go anywhere.
Certainly.
Yeah, I mean, like the, the, the plane you're talking about at the North Hawks, we approve that as a, uh, as a crane company or something, Rich.
I thought it was a, I thought, was it like a, I think an asphalt.
No, they sold asphalt equipment.
That's it, okay.
But it was an asphalt company, and that, that we had a public hearing, we approved the plan, and then they went.
It was the same.
Same lot, yeah.
Yeah.
But like I said, the tech review stuff, we, we get people in all the time, and it's, you know, they just, either we scare them away or.
It'd still be interesting to know.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, the next item too, uh, so we have, uh, Master Plan Implementation Committee meeting, um, this Thursday as well. Um, and, um, so just wanted to share that with the board. And then the last two items, um, the quick item here, so the State Restaurant Relief Fund, um, it was a business in town, Veranda's Cafe, it was just recently awarded, um, $30,000 for COVID-related expenses. And the original grant notice was distributed to restaurants and posted online, and with the process of identifying others that may have, um, applied as well. That is good news, you may recall, and in my memory, I wanna say it was right after the holidays, perhaps in January or so, um, the governor announced through, through the, the, uh, COVID relief funds, sector-specific grants, and, uh, in this case, um, sector-specific was for the restaurant, um, businesses, and, um, there were some, um, there are several restaurants, eateries, and so on, in the region also, um, that did receive funding, and we're just starting to get word. I use this as an opportunity too, for anyone, um, that is watching as well, um, what we did reach out to, uh, to the restaurants, um, in the beginning, and then also at this stage, just to inquire, to see, because there, there is some, at least there's been some good news, and happy to share that, where it's also fitting too, um, where it's, um, you know, here in the Village Business District. And, which leads to a segue of, uh, the last, the last item for, uh, for tonight, um, and just a brief presentation uh, with respect to the, um, Local Rapid Recovery Planning Grant. So earlier this year, you folks may recall, um, we received a grant to develop a COVID recovery planning document, uh, for businesses in Oxford, Oxford, uh, and the study area, focus area, although can definitely, and you'll see, hopefully, tonight, the recommendation can be replicated throughout the community, um, but focus just to right-size this, um, the, uh, state asked all the communities to look at a certain area of your community, in this case, we, um, we're looking at the Village Business District and, um, and to come up with some strategies, and we're not the only ones, there are other communities. I think a total of, um, 100-plus communities that have received, um, this funding, really, it's technical assistance. And to identify, to compare notes, to, to look at trends, to look at data, um, and identify best practices that may be helpful to, to the community, that community may want to, to embark on for, um, for assistance. So tonight, and if I may, and this is the, the part where I will turn this off, turn this over, I should say, uh, to, um, to our, um, plan facilitator, um, so we have Mark Faverman from Faverman Design, and he will, I did share a copy of the PowerPoint with you tonight, um, but Mark Faverman will provide a brief update on the work undertaken this past spring and the work that we have planned for the summer. If you just bear with us one moment. Made a screen change there, just one second. Mark, are you there?
I'm here. Um, I'm, I'm gonna click on this PowerPoint, hopefully it's mine that I have, and, and I think it is. Can everybody see that?
We don't see it.
No.
We don't even see you. We have the paper, the paper piece.
Um, okay, well, let's.
Kind of walk us through it, come on.
Let's try it again and see if it, if that'd be better.
Um, Mark, try double-clicking on the Zoom icon.
I've been disabled, it says.
I did, just a moment.
I mean.
Both of them.
It looks like you do have the screen.
Okay. And you should be able to see this, right? No? Yes?
No. We can see your desktop.
How about now?
Oh, yeah, yeah. No.
Just one moment.
I'm just gonna make them a call host.
Yes.
That seems to work better than sharing.
Just hop in the car and get you.
Some, sometimes.
Anyway, remember, some kind of passes around, this is the reorganization science and management sheets.
So Mark, you are the host now.
Okay, and, and are you able to see anything?
We can see you.
We can see you.
Not the slideshow, though, that's too bad. Okay, um, so, thank you all for allowing me to make this presentation, I also wanna introduce my colleague, uh, Daphne Politas, who is also here tonight, and she's gonna fill in the gaps that I leave out, and, um, perhaps, uh, give some refinement to some of the things I'm trying to say. First thing is, I wanna describe the Local Rapid Recovery Plan Program. It's a project of the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative, which is part of the Department of Housing Community Development, and it's a, from a fund that the governor and Lieutenant Governor came up with to help, um, project-based recovery plans tailored to the unique economic challenges and COVID-19-related impacts of downtowns, town centers, and commercial areas. Included are, um, the analysis and exploration of challenges, barriers, strategies, and actions with a focus on developing tactical and strategic project recommendations. And these, of course, are to help the communities achieve their recovery goals, and as Tony said, there are about 125 communities in the Commonwealth that have this technical, uh, assistance going on right now. And the effort will culminate in plans that summarize the diagnostic findings and offer clear tactical project recommendations by the end of August, 2021. There are three sections or three phases to this, it's too bad you can't see these pictures, because they're nice. Phase one.
Why don't you send me the, send me the PowerPoint, maybe I can share it.
Uh, okay, um, let, let me, let me go ahead and we'll come back, okay? Okay, let me, let me go ahead and we'll come back, okay? Phase one, data gathering and diagnostic. We've already done a lot of the baseline studies of the data surrounding Oxford. Phase two, analysis and project recommendations, that's what we're in right now. And we also want your input and the community's input into some ideas. We've come up with some good ones, but there might be some other ideas that we can try to formalize and make into a final plan over July and August. The impacts of COVID nineteen, retailers were in a primary survival mode. Closures versus openings have been rather balanced in Oxford. Assistance for small businesses are needed, both technically and digitally. Few smaller stores are visually inviting in Oxford that was before COVID and during COVID and currently. Opportunities for the future were underscored during this period. And demand for the new normal is now key. Considerations for new directions has been reinforced. Oxford's commercial businesses as one entity rather than segmented, that is a overview of everything in Oxford as a part of individual, as opposed to individual entities. And a determination Oxford's history is a key to destination building. And that's something we're gonna take up just now. Business related possible strategies. We, we would like, from what we're hearing, we would like to help Oxford participate in a shared, perhaps regional marketing strategy. Training on social media for small businesses, that is websites and e-commerce and all kinds of things that a small business doesn't generally come to naturally. Or, or if it's an older business, it's not something that is part of their DNA and needs to be added to it. Storefront design guidelines and perhaps a grant program, we're going to investigate guidelines for new businesses. Popups in vacant storefronts and at public events to maybe test the water for new retailers and new stores and shops. A self guided historic Oxford tour. And I'm asking you, what about other suggestions? What do you think? And we can talk about that at the end of the discussion. Phase three, the strategic intervention ideas, that these business ideas include with shared marketing, training on use of social media, storefront facade improvement programs. Signage needs to be refreshed, perhaps directories that are located throughout the town. Capacity building and public private partnerships, a way for businesses to come together to pool resources and coordinate efforts. Perhaps a new downtown business association, friends of Oxford's Main Street, et cetera. Outreach programs to attract additional businesses. And I think Tony said that a new business is going to be opening soon, right Tony? Are you talking about that?
Preliminary, yes.
Yeah, good.
Early conversations, but there's some remodeling even going on in the center at some of the, at least one of the properties right now.
Public realm for the town of Oxford, branding and wayfinding signs should be implemented, installed. Amenity improvement for public transit users and bike riders perhaps. And build on traditional events by additional public celebrations, cultural events to attract patrons. Such as perhaps an Oxford Day to showcase local restaurants, businesses, artists, musicians, organizations. And even town boards and committees. Following up this, I wanted to show you a concept that's being developed and planned for. A self guided Oxford historic tour concept. And some of the, and this is for pedestrians and vehicles and even bike riders. This would include the Huguenot Fort, the Johnson massacre site, Charles Lindbergh landing area, Camp Hill Monument. Jocelyn Park, the bandstand, the one room schoolhouse, Clara Barton's summer home. The town hall, which is a Grand Army of the Republic building, various war memorials, the library museum. The Universalist Church. And this project or this thought was first discussed during the bicentennial in seventy five and seventy six. It didn't go very far and it was additionally discussed in nineteen eighty four. And here we are in twenty twenty one, and I think that we can really develop this into something. Another area that we think is really sort of key for the development of Oxford is the storefront design guidelines should be developed. And that would be a very nice set of directions and standards for new and existing businesses. The third thing to think about would be how to do branding and wayfinding concepts. And that would be from historical markers, some of which were put up, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy years ago. And new signage and wayfinding. So that in essence is what we're talking about. And I would love to have any of you give me your opinions of what you think will be some additional ideas or additional directions that we should look at as a strategy. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that presentation. We've got it, we, even though you couldn't present your slides, we did go along with you as you talked about it. We do all have a copy of it here.
We can blame it on the weather, I think. So you can see it's very energetic, it's very lively. We're trying to be very practical and we're trying to do things that will enhance the businesses and the services provided in the town of Oxford.
So in a way, one can think about it in terms of what individual businesses might need in terms of support. Whether that be help with marketing or social media or how to, you know, dress their window. And then the other area of concentration would be what can be done to the whole village district as a whole? To make it more cohesive, to make it more of a place, to make it more attractive for people to go as a destination. So one is the individual business and then the other is the district as a whole. And what are the top things that you think are needed for recovery, for reopening, for reimagining? For building back better?
So we, in other words, we want to turn the town of Oxford from not just a place, but into a destination.
Right, so something along the lines of having a kiosk centrally located in the central business district showing the locations of all these historical places, whether it's Cleavon's birthplace, whether it's all, you know, historical bridges, Buffalo Hill. Eli Johnston's old house, you know, the Barton House there, I mean, there's plenty of historical places. You know, you've been on here where they're located and someone coming to the town could, you know, look at a map. You know, with all those being located and directed to them.
One of the newer technologies, the newer technologies is to have a QR code that would be on this kiosk. And you could, with your smartphone, you could download it and that would give you the walking tour or the.
I do that on trail, I do that on trails up in the Berkshires and stuff like that.
And you have enough here, I mean, it's clearly, you have a lot of things to look at and to see. So it's not like you're gonna have to make up some new ones, see what you have.
To Clara Barton, apparently there's another woman of fame, Agnes Ballard, who's the woman architect and the first woman elected to public office in the state of Florida. She was born in Oxford. So you could have, you know, a theme going.
See, I told you that Daphne would fill in the gaps here.
I mean, but having a place where people could actually come and get that information in one location, not having to, you know, cherry pick ones they want to do.
To show the relationships between them, right? Because you could also connect to some of your natural resources, your natural preserve that the Corps of Engineers oversees.
It's a very good idea and one that we have worked with in the past in other communities where we had a, have a series of directories and Wakefield. And they have history framing the directory of various goods and services that are being provided and then there's a map.
Again, just like you're going on a trail hike, they have all the locations of where the lake is or where the mountain is or where the pool is. Same type thing, but on a bigger scale of the town of Oxford.
And what if some of those, Mark, have you seen those markers where you, they're transparent and you see what used to be there? And then you see through the transparent plexiglass what is there?
Yeah, and that, it can also be done through the QR code on your iPhone, so it could be augmented.
Virtual reality.
It could be, it could be a, you know, a virtual experience as well. So twenty first century technology is certainly something to look into and to work out. Any other suggestions so far?
Thank you, thank you, Rich. I'm going to apologize for a second, I might take a few minutes here, but we had a lot of these discussions, we're talking about, and Roger was part of it on the master plan committee and we have the master plan implementation committee. And there are a number of things that we wanted to do downtown. And what you're talking about tonight fits right into that. Let's talk about destination points, because that's one of the issues that the town has. As far as bringing people into the center of town, we really don't have a destination point. And I like what you did about, you know, the historical part, but the other thing we talked about, and your timing is very good, has to do with the community center. We felt that if we could get an active vibrant community center, that might attract people into downtown. And I know the town has appropriated money at the last town meeting, Tony, to have a study done, an engineering study done on that facility. And it just recently, somebody on Facebook thought we should put a swimming pool in it. And before people go crazy on that, it's just a suggestion. But we have to do this architectural study first to see what it's going to cost to bring up that facility. Now, there's a number of things that we could use that facility for, we've talked about this. We have overcrowded and Tony, if I'm out, you know, if I shouldn't be saying this, let me know, but I know we're overcrowded here at the town hall. We need more space, so maybe we can work at converting part of that into office spaces and instead of going out and buying the facility, we take the money to do the second floor, a part of that for offices, like we did for the school department. We have a VPW facility that's not in good shape. We can move their office instead of paying another facility up and towards North Oxford and managing that, we can move that into the community center. Maybe bringing in more activities to get more people coming downtown. You know, to visit our town, having a reason to go to the center of Oxford. And the other thing people complain about is we've lost a couple of old buildings in town over the last fifteen or twenty years. Those of us that have been around, we lost the Jawsom School because no one maintained it. Most recently, we lost the Wood and Swinners. Facilities. We're getting to the point where the, the community center is going to get to that point if we don't put some money into it. So we can piggyback three of these things, if we can save the building, you know, alleviate some of the overcrowding that we have here. Consolidate the DPW facility office, so we have one building. Those are the type of things I think that we really, that the master plan has talked about. So I hope that this is something that, you know, you people are considering and looking into. And as far as the center of town goes, you know, and we've talked about this at some of the meetings we had earlier, about many more benches in the downtown area, repairing the sidewalks, you know, we don't need new sidewalks, maybe we can repair the bad sections. The other thing that was brought to my attention is that there's a strip of land between the road and the sidewalk. And if you look at the areas where the town maintains it, it's beautiful. And if you look at the areas where the individual homeowners take care of it, some are beautiful and some are a mess. So I don't know if we need to look at change and how do we take care, does the town take care of it? So those are some of the things that we've talked about at the at the master plan implementation committee. And I hope that you guys can kind of incorporate that in some of the suggestions that you come up with.
May I ask a question, was there outdoor dining instituted during COVID?
Veranda Cafe, I think. And also I see people, what's the place down here? Not, well, that, but the.
The coffee shop, Isidora's?
Isidora's, they have outside dining too.
Was, but was that, was more, was that increased during COVID?
I don't think so.
It's part of the state emergency, which is so important, like that all came about because of the state of emergency, which has ended. I think it ends at fifteen.
It ends tomorrow.
Yeah, and they extended the outdoors.
Extended the outdoor dining.
They extend that to the fall of this year, but.
The only, to answer your question, the only business that I'm aware of that had it outdoor dining because of COVID was the diner. Oxford diner, they had put some, the other places we've talked about have had outside times before COVID.
Not, not, not Oxford, Oxford's came after.
Yeah, but that wasn't, but they had applied to us before COVID started, yeah, you'll get the plan. Yeah, it took them that long to get it done, but they applied, I think it was a year and a half, two years ago, they came and asked us to do that.
I was just wondering what you thought of Mark's idea of the pop up events in vacant stores, in public spaces, on sidewalks.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, it's definitely a good idea, but it's always, you know, the doing outside is always dependent on weather. You know, and again, it's the cost of putting up a tent or some kind of protection that is, can be a lot. But I mean, it's a great idea.
But it's a way also of testing before you make a more major investment, right?
Yeah, yeah.
See what people like.
So, can I add something? So before COVID, we were trying to implement more things to attract people in town. We had that movie night, we had the food truck right over at Jawsom Park. I think had COVID not entered the picture.
We had concerts, we had concerts on Sundays.
How successful were those efforts?
The.
We forgot.
And before that, like the free concert nights, those were always pretty, those free concerts on the gazebo were always pretty well attended. But they were always done by local groups, I believe, it was not really a, was there a town organization?
It's the bandstand committee. And then we have this once a year, I think it's the Lions Club and they have a fall festival in town where the gazebo is and that's, you know, a lot of people do attend that.
There was a farmer's market there going in the summertime.
Yep, sometimes there's a couple people there with the gazebo.
So you, so you actually have something to build on, right?
Oh, yeah.
And the Jocelyn Park is a very good venue for a lot of.
Yes, it's a nice space for, yeah. And even, you know, Cobunko Pond used to be, that used to be the town park and I think that's really improved now.
Oh, yeah.
That's really, that's really a nice area.
What's the name of it, sorry?
Cobunko Park, I think it's called, Cobunko Pond, it's right near the high school. But that originally was where the town park was.
It's right next to the high school. And it's also right next to like seventeen miles of trail through the woods along the French River, that whole area. If somebody wanted to develop that, I mean, you have a splash pad, you have a public beach. You have the wonderful building they've got there, you've got all the athletic fields. You've got about seventeen miles of trails through the woods that Army Corps of Engineers, I mean, somebody could go and spend a whole day there and have plenty to do. We've just never marketed that. Roger will have the committee to take care of that.
During COVID, that was a very popular place to be. There were more people in the woods than ever before.
We could develop that site because the town just bought another, was it Rich, acre or two acres? I mean, it's
There's a nice pine grove up there where they used to have picnic tables and stuff like that. There's a lot going on and again, they redid the buildings, so it is really nice.
To the village district.
Maybe a mile.
About a mile.
About a mile.
Roger, didn't they have a race or something like a triathlon there one year? Which was, how would that, I'm, I'm fool you, Rich. You talk about events bringing people into town, was it a triathlon or?
There was a triathlon, there was also a half marathon trail race through there. I mean, it's a great area. So, so one of the things that this kind of brings up is you know, I'd like to see a way to unify all these different areas. you know, I'd like to see a way to unify all these different areas. You know, there's kind of a disconnect between the center of town, the north end of town, and the south end of town.
Different committees.
And, you know, we, the thing that I keep coming back to is we need a way, you know, like Mark talks about, making it a destination, right? Make the center sort of the focal point, but kind of a spoke to everything else so that, you know, we have businesses in the south end of town that I'm sure they employ a lot of people. It would be great to get them somehow to the center of town rather than going to, you know, neighboring town Webster that has, you know, it's like a strip mall, you have, you know, fourteen fast food restaurants, whatever. And then some of these things like this, the historic tour, kind of a funny story, a buddy of mine has run a five K in every community in Massachusetts. And when we came to Oxford, he asked me to, you know, kind of host him. And I actually did this list as a running tour. And he posted that on Facebook and whatever. So, you know, folks in his running community now sees, you know, some of these things in Oxford. So hopefully, you know, gives a little visibility. But a lot of these things right now are kind of islands on their own. So it would be nice to have some sort of connection, you know, between the trail system that we have in town, Carbuncle, we have Robinson Pond, we have all these, you know, natural resources. You know, so I'd like to not forget that when we're concentrating on the businesses, you know. We want to make this a destination. Maybe those are focal points to have people come to. I know a lot of people come to, come to town to use the disc golf course, you know, out at Hodges. And, you know, so there's a lot of aspects that are sort of disparate that it would be good to, you know, kind of unify.
I like all these comments because they reinforce the whole sense of pride of place. And everybody that I've spoken to in Oxford has a certain feeling of pride of place, and I think that's great.
And there's kind of thirst in town for things to do, you know, like Mary talked about the movie nights and things like that. You know, a lot of those things are maybe sponsored by a particular group or whatever. And it's not, we need some sort of commonality to, you know, have like a one place that every, you know, we have all these announcements or whatever and...
That can happen with the directory or directories. And they could be either static or dynamic and digital. And then we could look into all that and see what kinds of costs. But if it's a two-sided directory, one would have that strategic map with the historic sites and a directory of businesses and services. And the other side could be about special events or celebrations or even governmental announcements. So there's a, there's a lot of potential to do good things there. So...
Yeah, even a thing like, you know, where, where, where do I park? You know, not every business has, you know, forty parking spots or whatever, but there's, there's places in town that, you know, people can park. They may need to walk a little bit, but there's plenty of people that are willing to, you know, to walk a block and a half if, if that means they can safely park their car, you know, for the day or several hours or whatever.
Is your parking meter?
No.
No.
Rich, I just want to point out two things though, Mark, that the town has already done two things that I think are key in getting to this downtown area. Number one, they're working on improving the crosswalks, right, Tony? And I don't know if you want to give us a little information about that. But one of the major issues we have, because our Main Street is so wide, people take their lives in their hands when it goes across Main Street. You can almost be able to run a marathon. But there are, what do we get, like a $300,000 grant somewhere around there to redo the crosswalks? I don't know if you want to give a more detail on that. The other thing that we did
Yeah.
is, is about parking downtown. At the last town meeting, we are allowing small businesses to use on-street parking to count towards some of their parking requirements, okay? And that's gonna open up more. In fact, we've got one right now, preliminary that Tony's working with. Before this bylaw, they couldn't do anything with this building. And they had done a nice job repairing it, fixing it up. Well, we made the change. He's working with someone right now that wants to bring a small business into our downtown area because of that change that we made. So we're counting on-street parking to go towards small business, and that should help things out a little bit. So I just want to let you know that the town has made some changes already, you know. If you want to give a little more information about the crosswalk.
Sure. And for you, Mr. Chairman, and Mark, I know you and I, we discussed this too, and just for public benefit, where the town has, has committed funding for, for design. And I'm also particularly thinking about the, the study of the narrowing of the roadway and essentially creating more space in front of properties for streetscape improvements and whether it be outdoor dining, public art, general placemaking. We also even talked about funding we've received in the past and continue to apply for to make improvements, to update the benches along the corridor and seating areas as well. And so it's a major, major priority of, of the town. And we're continuing to pursue whatever funding is available to, to make that work. But it's intriguing with the conceptual plans that were done. And I do believe, Mark, we did, actually, we did look at it because there was also some data there too with respect to vehicle counts and so on. One of the things when we look at with such a wide roadway, indeed, convenient to drive by very quickly, but with a roadway diet, if you will, not only does it enhance the front yard, if you will, for, for properties, for businesses in this context, but also it forces a certain slowing down, you know, so people can actually see and appreciate the businesses along the, the village business. And I think when we looked at Village Business District, when we looked at the counts as well, just general traffic counts, good numbers, vehicles per day in twelve, twelve thousand, one direction sixteen thousand, in another significant numbers, no, no small numbers whatsoever. And if there's a way to enhance the streetscape and support the businesses, so through whether it be the guidelines and, and all the placemaking features, whatnot, best practice that others have done and that we've done too, then I think, do think it will go a long way. So, so thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for, for highlighting that.
But aren't we doing something with the crosswalks?
Yes.
We're gonna, we're gonna put
The...
the little people standing on the side there with the lights.
Yes, the, the dedicated crosswalks signalized with the rapid flashing beacons.
That's what I was talking about.
Solar powered.
So that way there, people will be able, even though Main Street is wide, they're still gonna be able to cross Main Street without going through a lot of changes safely.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
So if it's cloudy all day, don't go out at night.
I would, I would take a flashlight and shine it on the ground.
Try to cross the street at night.
Well, I think they're battery backup, right? I hope so.
They are, yes.
Battery backup.
It's still moving quickly.
It's still running, but you know, you're... I think it's gonna be like a little island too in the middle, so you're gonna, you can get halfway, right? And take a break.
So, Tony, is that for all crosswalks?
Yeah, you can take a break.
No, question whether that's for all crosswalks. We have several different sites, and actually, I will get some more information to share it than, just for informational purposes. It's the exact locations where DPW is working on them. But, but they will sync up nicely, if you will.
Well, the theory behind that too is also it might force people to slow down a little bit.
Hopefully.
Because you see all these flashing lights.
Like you said, that's the thing. It's such a wide, it is only a one-lane roadster.
May I ask you, is your Main Street a local road or a state road?
State. No, I thought the town took care of Main Street from Front Street to Fair.
Heard it back to us a few years ago, didn't it?
Really?
Yeah. It depends where you are. There's some, there is some signage actually where State Road ends, if you will. And there is a maintenance.
I think we have Front Street to Fair on it.
The very center is local control?
That's fair to say.
Then you can do more in terms of traffic diet and everything, yeah.
We just got to be careful when we said we're gonna narrow Main Street because there's an awful lot of people that like, maybe need to a certain extent included, that like that wide pavement area. And that's why it's important to do the sidewalk the way we're doing the crosswalk because you can go halfway and still be safe. So the court is still out on whether or not we're gonna make it narrow or not as far as paving goes, I think.
Your, your, your Main Street there is, you could draw Pennsylvania Avenue into it, and then Pennsylvania Avenue would look small because it's such a processional way.
Again, the reason behind that was because at one time, they wanted to be the county seat of the city of Worcester, you know, Worcester County were a part of that. They wanted to be Oxford County. Way back when, that was the reason why they had the extra wide needs. That's part of the...
So, Mark, I have a question. So prior to COVID, Norman, myself, and Roger were on the branding, wayfinding concept. We were on the committee. So I know we spent, we had three or four meetings kind of going through the concept and the branding, and that's included in our packets. Where is the status on that?
We, we just need an approval of a design, and then we will have the ability to eventually implement it. So one of the parts of the study that we would like to do is try to figure out where there could be funding to implement it for you.
But wasn't that part of the, but as far as funding for that, wasn't that already funded for as part of this branding, wayfinding committee? That's why we did it?
I think it was only the design and planning.
Okay.
So which, which design are we going with? Do we know yet or not?
We haven't voted.
No, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, that's certainly one of the things that, you know, town managers has asked to me to assist with, sort of...
To get that.
To wrap it up, if you will.
Yeah, finalize. Because we were just about...
As I understand, we're anxious to move forward at some point.
But, you know, it's a good segue back to what you were saying. How do you connect all the desperate pieces of Oxford? You can do it through a wayfinding system with directional signage and, and trail markers and, you know, border markers and all kinds of things. And this, this is, this is a nice tool to do that connection, and it's a cost-effective tool. It's probably the, the most cost-effective capital expenditure that a city or town can do with the greatest visual impact. So I think that's, that's a very cool thing that that, that tool is really almost in place to help with that situation.
And it can tie into the directory and, and the mapping, and all of that can be...
The street furniture and the streetscape, and it could all be, you know, a thematic approach to it all could be done, right? Any more comments or questions? This has been very...
Okay. Well, we appreciate you presenting this to us tonight.
But we're gonna have a plan by the end of the summer, and hopefully we can come back and, and and along the way, we'll probably come up with a draft, and I'll have Tony perhaps circulate it, the draft.
Yes, great. We'll definitely check back in at some point during the summer, hopefully.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
All right, Tony. Anything else on your plate?
It's all for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else have anything?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion made. Seconded. For all those voting in favor...